We will now call the July 14th Public Hearing Meeting to Order. Item 1.1, under Ministerial Order M192, Resolution Regarding Open Meetings, be it resolved that. The Village of Valemount understands the provincial requirement of local governments to undertake best efforts to meet the legislative requirements for open meetings, which will include a transition back to an increased public presence at open council meetings and public hearings. And commencing on July 14th, 2020, open council meetings and public hearings will be held again in the Village of Valemount Council Chambers at 735 Cranberry Lake Road. And due to limited space in the municipal council chambers, Village of Valemount will continue to provide access to open council meetings and public hearings by electronic means. Therefore, until further notice, Village of Valemount will take the following measures to ensure openness, transparency, accessibility to its citizens. Open council meetings and public hearings will be livestreamed on YouTube, enabling the public to watch and hear the proceedings. Members of the public will be able to submit comments to council electronically through the YouTube livestreaming platform. Public comment on approved agenda items except public hearing items will be accepted via email and mail until 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting and read aloud during the proceedings. Written submissions regarding public hearing items will be received up until the hearing begins and electronic comments will be received and read aloud during the public hearing. Agenda, minutes, and links to meeting videos will be provided on the Village of Valemount website. Motion, please. Counsel Valenshett, Counsel Pearson, Discussion on the Ministerial Order. Hearing none, own favor. Item 2.1, this is a public hearing. This is an official community plan, OCP, and zoning bylaw amendment for a proposed development at 1451 Fifth Avenue. ZA 19-17, Village of Valemount Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number 812-2020, and OCP 19-01, Village of Valemount Official Community Plan Amendment Bylaw Number 814-2020. I will now read, maybe? A public hearing statement. This public hearing dated July 14th, 2020, held in the Village of Valemount Council Chambers at 735 Cranberry Lake Road, Valemount VC V0E2Z0. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to the terms of Local Government Act prior to consideration of Village of Valemount Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number 812-2020 and Village of Valemount Official Community Plan Amendment Bylaw Number 814-2020. At a public hearing, any person present who believes they are affected by a matter being considered shall be given an opportunity to be heard on the matter contained in the proposal. Members of the public should, speaking on the proposal, should, at the appropriate time, commence your address to this council by clearly stating your name and area of residence, upon which you may give us the benefit of your views concerning the proposal. Anyone who deems their interests are affected shall be given the opportunity to be heard at this meeting. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making their views known. All who speak at this public hearing will restrict their remarks to the matters contained in their proposal, and it is my responsibility as chairperson of this meeting to ensure that all remarks are so restricted. At the conclusion of a public hearing, council may, without further notice, give whatever effect council believes proper to the representation made at the hearing. We will now have a staff presentation under 3.1, presentation by our planner, Megan Vicente. Just fine, thank you.
Okay. So, I'm going to be sharing my screen here, so I'll start my field and my face will go Oh, it says host disabled participant screen sharing. I guess I'll maybe just do it without my PowerPoint then.
I would prefer that we can have a PowerPoint, please, if you have any sort of visuals.
I'm not sure who the host is to be able to make that change.
We'll give it a second, Megan.
Sir?
You're the host now, Megan.
Okay, can we see my slide?
Indeed, we can.
So, thank you for having us this evening. The public hearing this evening is for a proposed... It is as a slideshow.
Okay. Did you change it to a slideshow yet?
Yeah, is it appearing as a slideshow or just a window?
Just a window.
Hopefully that's... So, the public hearing this evening is for a proposed zoning and official community plan amendment to allow for housing and office space development at 1451 Fifth Avenue, legally described as Law A, District Law 7352, Plan PGP 32327. The subject property is owned by the Village of Valemount and is currently vacant. A proposed official community plan amendment is a designation change... The proposed official community plan amendment is a designation change from highway tourist commercial to multiple family residential to ensure the proposed zoning amendment is compliant with the official community plan. This zoning amendment proposes to rezone from highway tourist commercial, C4, to high-density residential, R5. Also to add office as a site-specific secondary use and to add new parking and loading provisions for properties with affordable housing covenants registered on title to require .5 parking stalls per dwelling unit. This development includes approximately 14 long-term affordable housing units for women and children in need as well as office space. Funding for this housing development from BC Housing was approved in November of 2019 as part of the province's 10-year Building BC Women's Transition Housing Fund. This is the first major investment of its kind in British Columbia in close to 20 years. This funding stream will increase the number of transition homes in BC by 63%. If this project is completed, RBCS will be able to expand upon the current service offerings to meet the need for safe, affordable, long-term housing for women and children at risk of or affected by violence in our community. The specifics of the building are not being addressed through these official community plan and zoning bylaw amendments. The subject property is within a development permit area, which means once the site layout is ready, they will be required to get a development permit approved by council as well as a building permit. This development permit process gives council the opportunity to have significant input regarding the layout and design. Funding is being provided by BC Housing for this development, so BC Housing will own the proposed building. The Village of Valemount owns the land and would lease it to BC Housing, and Robson Valley Community Services will operate within building. In order to lease village-owned land, a formal land disposition process must be followed. This will be brought forth to council if the zoning and official community plan amendments are approved prior to the issuance of a development permit or building permit. Robson Valley Community Services, in conjunction with McCullough Development Services, sought out the community's feedback regarding this project through BC Housing's Let's Talk website from June 22nd to July 5th and received 65 comments. These comments and a summary of the feedback is included in the council report as part of today's regular meeting of council. From a land use perspective, the justification for selecting the proposed location is: One, most viable village-owned available parcel of land. The Village of Valemount owns a finite amount of land within Valemount. Many of the larger parcels of vacant land have been earmarked for a variety of possible future needs such as cemetery expansion, schools, health services, firefighting services, and other community services. This particular piece of land is not ideal for any of these needs, and other land has been identified to better meet these potential future needs. Two, the cost of development. In order to make good use of grant funding, it was important to select a parcel with water and sewer mains close by and with minimum site preparation requirements and costs. And three, proximity to town center services and residential areas. The property is immediately north and south or zone residential. The health clinic, RCMP station, Centennial Park, elementary school, town center, the grocery store, and pharmacy are all within walking distance. Thank you.
Thank you. 3.2, reading of written submissions received prior to the public hearing to form part of the minutes. Ms. Vicente?
Yes, so I have a series of written comments that I'll be reading out, so bear with me. We received, well, it was 14, and then I checked my email right before the public hearing started, and there's two more, so I think we're at 16 now, and I will just read through them one by one.
Thank you.
Okay, so the first letter is from Bella, who's a Valemount resident. "Good evening, your worship, council, Village of Valemount staff, and community members. My name is Bella Jam and I live at 1020 Cranberry Lake Road, Valemount. Firstly, my reason for bringing forth my thoughts to council versus the Let's Talk page for the proposal is that I do not believe that all the negative comments will be brought forward to council's attention, as I have commented on there on three separate occasions and only received emails stating that I would be contacted. When I made my first comment, there was only one page of comments, one negative, the rest positive. Then on June 30th, all of a sudden, there were three pages of responses, and all are positive. I do not feel that the true feelings of all who commented will be brought to council's attention, and I feel that public input is needed before this location is rezoned to house low income. Instead of having a healthy discussion on the various Facebook pages that community members can take part of, there are parts that are missing or not viewable by those who seem opposed. I would think that healthy discussions and input would have made it a better experience for everyone, as long as they were not blocked by others who do not want their comments seen. It is because of this that I am worried that the voices of those opposed to the location, like I, will not be heard. I also would also like to know who answers the emails sent to communityrelations@bchousing.org as I have yet to hear from them to respond to my emails. I am a first-generation Canadian, born to Portuguese parents who moved to Canada to make a better life for themselves and their family. We did not have a privileged life. They too had to rely on family and low-income housing. I have lived in Valemount for 43 years and watched as the community changed, increased and decreased in population over this time. I have also worked since the age of 11 at various businesses and volunteered with different organizations over the years. In 1999, I had the pleasure of being hired and trained by BC Ambulance as a paramedic. I served this community for 17 years, becoming the paramedic chief for the last three years of my service up until an injury six years ago. Without going into too many details, during my time serving, I have experienced the fear of domestic violence when I had a residence tending to a patient and the violator walked in blocking my retreat to safety. I have been in situations where I have feared for my life, whether they involve shards of glass or other weapons. I know that fear firsthand. I am not opposed to low-income housing. I am, however, opposed to housing for victims, whether it be a safe house, transition house, or low-income housing on a busy commercial thoroughfare. Many who are running from abuse will not have a vehicle to go do their shopping. They should be able to be within walking distance. They should be placed closer to families so that the children can experience playing safely with other children, and their parent will also be able to forge new friendships with other parents. It is with my experiences of working as a paramedic in our community and other communities, and with great concern as a mother and grandmother, that I feel very strongly about the proposed location for low-income housing for women and children who are victims of domestic violence being located on Fifth Avenue. Children who have experienced the sounds and sights of violence are at great risk of finding themselves re-experiencing the fear with the triggers of the noises of vehicles and people on the main road leading into town. I do suffer from PTSD and recently have experienced triggers from certain words, smells, and also noises. This site is next to an empty commercial building, near motels, a pub, cold beer and wine store, etc. Yes, it is next to medical facilities and close to the RCMP station, but it is not manned 24/7. Fifth Avenue is a busy thoroughfare where local and visitors to our community's accessed groceries, pharmacy, banking, etc., past the proposed location, not to mention the delivery trucks, and in the wintertime, all the snowmobilers and the sleds, who also stay in these motels and do not always obey the laws in the community, parking wherever they find an opening for their trucks and log trailers. Many locals can attest to that. Fifth Avenue should be kept as all commercial, except for the existing homes that are already located along there. That piece of property should be kept for possible future expansion of the clinic that already sits close to it, or kept for some other type of commercial business. Over the years that I have lived here, I have watched as the building that the present pharmacy sits in and the one IGA occupy were doubled in size. Home Harbor was expanded, the commercial building that houses Unique Boutique was built, the pub, motels, more and more commercial buildings have popped up along this busy street. At first, I thought the location of the low-income housing project could be located across from the field where the old high school was. There is an empty lot for sale there that was supposed to have multifamily housing built many years ago. It would be a perfect spot, as it puts families closer yet to shopping and still close enough for medical services. As I looked at different areas owned by the village that would be much more well-suited for this project, I found on the Village of Valemount's page, under Documents, a document prepared by Radlock for the Village of Valemount. "A Conceptual Site Plan for Affordable Housing Options," just recently prepared on June 17th, 2019. It shows three separate sites which are much more suitable for low-income housing, of which I believe, but I'm not sure, one site is being looked at already for building low-income housing on. Site one on the map shows the site where the water sports have been held in the past. I believe that this is a much better suited site to build RBCS's low-income housing. The new low-income housing would be next door to the existing daycare preschool RBCS offices and close to the elementary school, giving families safe access from kindergarten to grade seven. It is also close to residences with families and children. Although not close to medical or shopping, it is close to schools, giving families with children old enough for daycare all the way up to grade seven, a much safer area to live and play. I am sure that RBCS would be able to add their services to the families with the needs that they are supporting, would be able to help with getting to shopping or other appointments that they have. There are already other services in place, which would mean all the funding for low-income housing would be used on what it is meant to do. Provide affordable low-income housing to those needing these services, close to the already in-place RBCS offices. Thank you for taking the time to read my long-winded letter, but to explain my thoughts, I needed to make it longer than I would have liked. My only other question, as many others would like answered, is: Is or is this not a building geared towards both fleeing domestic violence and/or transitioning into a new life? Thank you and good evening, Bella Jam. Okay, my second letter is from Jana, a McBride resident. "I am writing in support of the amendment to rezone the property for Fifth Avenue Affordable Housing Project. As a resident of McBride, I feel that this project, even though in a community removed from my own, will still provide opportunity for women and children in McBride and all the outlying communities in the Robson Valley. It is important to realize that housing will positively impact all of the Robson Valley, not just the community of Valemount, and enable residents to continue to live in their community or close to it. I fully support the rezoning amendment and believe Valemount has the capacity, space, and capabilities to have this come to fruition. I hope the community supports this project and understands the reach that affordable housing has on the entire Robson Valley. As a previous RBCS Safe Shelter Coordinator for the Robson Valley, I have had experience in placing women and children in a supportive and safe environment and struggled to do so with the lack of housing options in our area. Often, women were housed in motels in Valemount as there were no other option, this not being ideal. A few times, I had clients from McBride that needed to be placed outside of McBride, and again, there were limited options due to the lack of safe housing for women who were at risk of experiencing violence. Not only is this an acute issue, where do women go for the short term to escape violence, but it also begs the question to where do they settle once the immediacy of then meeting that harmful relationship has subsided? Many who would choose to stay in their community as that is where their core supports also live. Having affordable housing for women and children will help to provide options for women who are in harmful relationships and remain there due to a lack of housing options. As an RBCS seniors program coordinator, I can also speak to the need for affordable housing for our elders. There are a handful of single female senior citizens on my veteran home list in Valemount who would be an ideal fit for affordable housing, as their income level and lack of support forces them to live in housing that is not appropriate for their age and independence level. From my experience as an employee of RBCS, I truly believe our organization is best suited to spearhead this project, collaborate with key stakeholders of Valemount, and grow this housing unit to be a well-supported and fully utilized housing unit. Through the many programs that RBCS offers, WorkBC, Anti-Violence, Better at Homes, and the multitude of MCFD-funded programs, we have connections to enable a full wraparound service for our clients who live in this housing. Thank you, Jana." Okay, the next letter is from Jill, a resident of Valemount and employee of RBCS. "As the stopping the violence counselor for Robson Valley Community Services, I see firsthand the dire need of such a facility in our region. Countless women and children remain vulnerable where there are little to no resources available to them, and compounding that fact with steadily rising housing costs in the valley, living from violence and maintaining that safety remains to be a giant hurdle for numerous residents. This impressive collaboration between BC Housing, McCullough Development Services, and RBCS is a project that wholeheartedly addresses this need by providing women and children with a viable opportunity to resurrect their lives from the oppressive shadows of abuse and trauma toward a healthier and brighter future filled with potential hope and success. Such a hand-up, not a handout, is exactly what's needed to break the cycle of violence for future generations and for the betterment of society going forward. In regards to the 1451 Fifth Avenue rezoning proposal, I am in full support of the location selected. In having the residential units off of Sixth Avenue, portion of the property, residents will be set up along a quiet street with many other neighboring homes. I have no concerns about the location's perceived traffic volume, and in fact, I myself will on Sixth Avenue remind young children play in the street regularly. This is not a safe shelter. This is not emergency housing. I feel that many residents who are arguing against the location are influenced by the idea that this project is akin to emergency shelters where women and children are in immediate risk of harm from their users. We already have a program in place for emergency confidential shelter, while this project focuses on the long-term support of those women and children. The location is conveniently located for all ages and allows for ease of access to all emergency services, village shopping, schools, parks, and highway access, all pertinent to potential residents who are likely to be limited in their modes of transportation. It goes without saying that I am an employee of RBCS in Valemount and a proud one at that. I started with the organization in early 2020, quickly gaining responsibility and trust from the encouraging management team. It became evident that a strong work ethic, undeniable supportive organization's vision and camaraderie among the team earns employees respect and professional opportunities abound. I've seen the executive director transform the Robson Valley with an abundance of new programming and supportive services that have made a difference in countless lives. Without a doubt, RBCS is the most qualified organization prepared to take on the challenge of this monumental project. That being said, I know we will do it with bigger comprehensive professionalism and, above all else, absolute passion, heart, and soul. Thank you for your time. Okay, the next letter is from Heather, a Valemount resident, to whom I may concern. "I am writing to express my support for the affordable housing development at 1451 Fifth Avenue. This is a valuable use of land being offered by the Village of Valemount, a valuable asset to have within our community for women and children who are in need of affordable and safe housing. Having 14 units would increase the availability of safe housing that our community lacks. With the soaring costs of housing our community has already experienced, we would be foolish not to seize the opportunity created by multiple levels of government coming together in support of a project that addresses a critical need in our community. These forward-thinking measures will allow for an increase in affordable housing in our community. Robson Valley Community Services has been a steadfast and well-established nonprofit organization that understands the community's needs and employs experienced and well-trained staff. They are in the best position to lead this project successfully to completion and over the long term. Thank you, Heather." Okay, the next letter is from Amy Fitzgerald, who is the executive director of the BC Society of Transition Houses out of Vancouver. "Dear Mayor Owen Torgerson of Valemount Council, On behalf of the BC Society of Transition Houses, I write in full support of the Robson Valley Community Services Housing Project in Valemount. The RBCS housing project will fill a critical need for safe and affordable housing for women and children who have experienced or at risk of violence in the Robson Valley. Robson Valley Community Services, with the support of BC Housing and McCullough Development Services, with rezoned vacant land owned by the Village of Valemount, will build new permanent affordable housing for women and children, augmenting their safe shelter program. The new building will offer approximately 14 rental apartments as well as office space to provide on-site support to pregnant women and children with resources to help them towards safe, independent living. The new housing will help meet a growing need for safe, affordable, long-term housing for women, including seniors and children in the area. The housing project is part of the Building BC Women's Transition Housing Fund, which is part of the province's 10-year plan to assure affordable housing for all BC residents. The province's 30-point plan prioritizes women and children fleeing violence and abuse and their need for a safe, secure place to live with support so they can heal. BC Society of Transition Houses is a member-based provincial umbrella organization supporting transition, second- and third-stage houses, safe homes, and the Peace and Violence is Preventable Programs for women, children, and youth experiencing or at risk of violence. We support anti-violence member programs across the province through training, resources, advocacy, and research. BC Society of Transition Houses, BESTH, and RBCS work together to ensure BC women, children, and youth receive trauma-informed support services and safe shelter. From our provincial perspective, there is a critical need for women and children to access a continuum of safe and affordable housing options along with comprehensive wraparound support services. Operating in the Robson Valley since 1980, the Robson Valley Community Services is well-hairst in the needs of the community and the prevalence of violence against women and families. Working collaboratively with community partners, RBCS has grown into a broad-based community social services agency, providing a variety of programs and services to a remote and rural population. Providing services to communities stretching over 200 kilometers, RBCS has a skilled program staff and a visionary leadership team that is constantly adapting and innovating to deliver the best and most relevant programs and services for residents of the Robson Valley. The pending housing project exemplifies this innovation, as the project is specifically designed for the valley and takes into account Valemount's precariously low vacancy rates and how that affects support services for families. With a provincial vacancy rate for rental apartments hovering at 1.4%, finding safe and permanent housing is a challenge for nearly any renter in BC. If it is possible to find an available appropriately-sized and safe unit, cost is often prohibitive. BC's lowest-income renters are spending on average 80% of their monthly income in rent and utilities. In some communities in BC, the data shows that the average low-income renter is spending over 100% of their income on housing. Women experiencing violence face many challenges to securing affordable housing, with the most foundational barrier being unaffordability of housing for poverty. Women experiencing violence need to find housing that is actually affordable, no more than 30% of her income, so that they are able to avoid a cycle of poverty. than thirty percent of her income, so that they are able to avoid a cycle of poverty. Research shows that the lack of affordable housing forces women to make the difficult choice to return to a violent situation or face homelessness, both of which may put her safety and her children's safety at risk. Across BC, only four percent of BC women are able to leave transition houses for an affordable home while twenty-five percent find housing beyond their means. Seventy-one percent remain temporarily housed or sheltered or return to their abuser. Domestic violence is one of the main causes of homelessness for Canadian women and children. Women living in remote communities face additional barriers. Transition houses and safe homes that serve remote communities report a myriad of barriers to women even accessing their services, let alone finding affordable housing. Many of these communities report there is no or very limited social housing opportunities in their community, leaving women to find housing in the private rental market where they face insecure housing situations, discrimination from landlords, or a lack of safety and confidentiality. The circumstances for women in remote communities are especially dire with the overall lack of transportation. The Robson Valley Community Services is acutely aware of and focused on meeting a significant community need for affordable housing, catering to vulnerable women and children who have experienced or are currently experiencing violence. In one year, more than twelve thousand three hundred women and children access transition houses, second-stage housing, and safe homes to escape violence or abuse in BC. On any given day, seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine women and their children are sleeping in shelters across Canada because it is not safe at home. The RBCS housing project will provide critically needed safe and affordable housing for Robson Valley women and their families so that they can survive and thrive with the support of the accomplished RBCS team. BCSTH wholeheartedly supports the Valemount Housing Project, which will keep women and children safe in perpetuity in the Robson Valley. Please do not hesitate to contact me if I can be of further assistance. Sincerely yours, Amy Fitzgerald, Executive Director. Okay. The next letter is from Emma H. Bond, to whom I may concern. I am very pleased to provide a letter of support for Robson Valley Community Services. Robson Valley Community Services is an outstanding organization serving both McBride and Valemount. They offer a wide variety of free, client-directed, and family-centered services. They have been running successful programs serving men, women, and children in my constituency for over thirty-five years. I have worked with the organization on several initiatives and have seen firsthand the impact they have had. I am impressed with the significant efforts that are being made to work in a coordinated and collaborative way with other agencies to better support clients. Creating supportive housing for women and children in Valemount is important for the growing population in this small rural community. It will enable the women, children, and senior women to remain in their community without having to move to a different city or town where they will not have family or support network. With the work of Robson Valley Community Services and the partnerships with the village of Valemount and the Northern Health Authority, I am confident they will submit an excellent proposal for the creation of a supportive housing project. Thank you for considering this request. Robson Valley Community Services has a track record of providing important and necessary services in this region of our province. Please do not hesitate to contact me directly if you require further information. Sincerely, Shirley Bond. Okay. And the next letter is from Patrick Johnson, the Secretary and Treasurer for the United Food and Commercial Workers International Union, or UFCW. UFCW 1518 represents approximately twenty workers at Robson Valley Community Services in Valemount. As you know, RBCS is on the front lines of providing support in Robson Valley. These committed workers are there to ensure the success and safety of the projects and the clients they serve. UFCW Local 1518 presents twenty-four thousand workers across BC and the Yukon. Unfortunately, they have seen the impact that poverty, race, and many other circumstances play on the safety of women and children. The need for supportive and safe housing exists everywhere, and we are proud to stand in support of this project at 1451 Fifth Avenue. These fourteen rental apartments with onsite support will help change the lives of these women and children for the better. The timing is now for this much-needed project. The location close to town and services makes this an ideal site. Having worked very closely with UFCW members working at RBCS, I feel comforted to know this important project will have dedicated and committed staff to ensure its success. Yours truly, Patrick Johnson. Okay. The next letter...
Megan, do you need a glass of water or a bit of a breather? How are you doing there?
How do you guys feel? I've got my water here, so...
Well, continue. Thanks.
I'm good to keep going. The next letter is from Taya, who is a nearby property owner of the subject property but lives in Spurs Grove. Dear Mayor and Council, Members of the Village of Valemount, In regards to the proposed amendments for property 1451 Fifth Avenue, as per your notice sent to owners and occupiers, we have the following. Just want to let you know that, for reasons herein described, we are opposed to changing the zoning and amending the OCP for this property. Valemount is quickly becoming known to the outside world as a tourist destination, and as such, many new visitors drive up the Fifth Avenue in search of services. We strongly believe this piece of property, which is located in a prime location near the entrance to Valemount, is better suited for future commercial endeavor and not as proposed for affordable housing and high-density residential. The Fifth Avenue will undoubtedly play a key role in welcoming guests in the future, considering the momentum the village has gained in recent years, like mountain biking park, snowmobiling, Valemount Glacier destinations, and close proximity to both Jasper and Mount Robson. To maintain a welcoming touristy feel, we believe it is in the best interest of the village to focus on commercial activities that cater to tourists along Fifth Avenue instead of going back to residential zoning. In our opinion, there are other areas of the village much better suited for the proposed high-density affordable housing project. For example, vacant properties between Elm Street and Donwood Street on Sixth Avenue, currently zoned R4, to name an alternative which we think makes more sense. Being opposed against both amendments does not, however, mean that we are against this intended affordable housing initiative. On the contrary, we fully support the intention and think it is a good thing for the village and region overall. We recognize, however, that it will ultimately be the village's decision to have a look at both these proposed changes. Sincerely, Henry K. Taya. Okay. The next one is from Laura Lai, a Village of Valemount resident. Dear Village Council, Thank you for the opportunity to voice my concerns for this proposal. While I am not opposed to providing housing for women and children in need, I feel that the proposed location of 1451 Fifth Avenue is not a suitable location for this or for any other medium or high-density residential type use. The proposed R5 high-density zone, which would be within existing commercial and public institutional zones, which to my knowledge cannot be found anywhere across the village. Providing this type of housing within the main corridor to the village raises confidentiality and privacy issues for the tenants as both Fifth and Sixth Avenues are at times used heavily to enter and exit the village. I feel that women may be less apt to ask for assistance if it meant being more exposed to the public than if it were within an existing residential neighborhood. Was 1451 Fifth Avenue chosen simply out of convenience or as a cost saver without consideration of the future tenants or adjacent property owners? I believe the village owns a large parcel of land near a high school that is adjacent to the existing high-density R5 zones and is still within walking distance to the... walking distance to amenities as well as a new community garden. Would this location not be more practical or suitable? Thinking of the future, should 1451 Fifth Avenue not be reserved for a possible health center expansion? In closing, I hope you will give thought to these concerns and reconsider the zoning and OCP application. Sincerely, Laura Lai. So, the next letter is from Claudia at Tomcat Enterprises. Dear Mayor and Council, As an adjacent property owner, 1455 Fifth Avenue, I would like to express my concerns regarding the zoning amendment and official community plan amendment in regard to 1451 Fifth Avenue.
Sorry, Megan. There's one in our package that's anonymous?
Okay, yeah. I think my order came out of order. Great, cool. So, yeah, number one, number ten out of our package here. Yeah, so this submission is... was submitted anonymously. No name or address was provided.
What's the legislation around that, please?
There's nothing in the legislation that speaks to any requirements for written submissions to a public hearing. It's up to municipalities to identify which piece of information they require for written We reached out to a number of different municipalities to see how it's handled and do it at places, and it seems like everybody does it differently. We... I received some advice from the Regional District that they always accept anonymous comments because otherwise that's staff who is basically filtering what gets put out to council, and I felt that it was more important to give you everything that we received and allow you to make your decisions, knowing that it was an anonymous submission.
Please proceed.
So, our family recently moved to the Robson Valley. I can tell you something that really hits home when you move from the big city, is that you really feel a distance from all things accessible or optional in terms of essential amenities. Especially during this time with pandemic and being limited in resources like groceries, the ability to make appointments with specialists, et cetera, there is truly no other option around these communities for hundreds of kilometers. This transition house would mean women and children fleeing domestic violence have the ability to access an essential amenity for life, for living, the potential to live safely, that is warm, welcoming, and full of resources, staff, and safety. Little background as to why I believe this project should one hundred percent be supported to move forward. My husband grew up every night listening to the tirades of his father from his earliest memories until the time he graduated high school when his father finally moved out. The whole community knew it was happening, but back then it was wrong to step in. It was against religion to divorce. He just didn't interfere. Where was she supposed to go? In a small town of less than five hundred people, there was nowhere to go except when it got really bad, there would be a warm bed at the aunt or uncle's just until things were calm enough to go home. His whole life, growing up, filled with terror and the fear that his father might go too far. Then there were the times when he had to step in. Imagine a small boy defending his mother, five years old, eleven years old, sixteen years old. Where was he supposed to go? He certainly wasn't going to leave his mom there with his siblings. Sounds a little familiar, given we are all also small villages in Valemount and McBride. We know what's going on here. We know, but we don't step in. Sound familiar? My sister, even if she wanted to access this type of service, she couldn't because down in the city, the houses are full. Even short term, where could she go to hide the bruises just long enough where makeup would be effective and she could go to work without people wondering what happened? My mother, new immigrant, barely spoke a word of English, meets a nice man who happened to drink too much. She didn't know until it was too late and she had nowhere to go. All she could do was sit and wait. Where was she supposed to go? Where are these children, babies, and women supposed to go when this is their reality, their everyday? We have to give everyone an opportunity for equality of life. We all have the right to, and it costs the community and its members nothing. Funded by the province, supported by the programs that are also funded to support every component of this project, it costs the community and its members nothing but a piece of land that isn't being used for anything else but for wild grass and weeds to grow on. It does not matter the location. The location means nothing compared to the fact that this project can, in very literal terms, save a child or their mother's life. So, the next letter is also anonymous and no address was submitted. In regards to the rezoning of 1451 Fifth Avenue, I have some concerns for your consideration. Our concern is the high volume... sorry, our concern is the high volume... sorry, reading these out of order.
It's okay.
Sorry about that. I'm going to stick with the one I have as number eleven here, from Tomcat Enterprises. Dear Mayor and Council, As an adjacent property owner, 1455 Fifth Avenue, I would like to express my concerns regarding the zoning amendment and official community plan amendment in regard to 1451 Fifth Avenue. First, I would like to state that I am all for affordable housing units for women and children. I have always advocated for women's rights and the rights of children. I was involved for many years with the Valemount Children's Activity Society and believe all children should have a safe, secure environment to grow. The proposed development is only one of the growing needs of our community. There are other groups that need our attention, such as the needs of our seniors. This is another area that we are lacking in needed facilities such as assisted living for seniors. There is a stronger argument to have seniors close to the clinic, but as council will note, the existing senior housing complex is at the other end of town. My objection is the location of the development that is being 1451 Fifth Avenue. Having the property used for office space is not an issue. It is the idea of apartments above the office space for women and children. The lot is long and narrow, offering little room for parking and the needed green space children require for outside activities. Fifth Avenue is the main corridor into our town's amenities. A busy street is not an appropriate location for this kind of development. I understand that being close to the health clinic is one of the driving factors. What will be the outcome if the health clinic is to expand? The logical answer is to use 1451 Fifth Avenue for expansion. Council might argue that when the health clinic expands, it would then be located elsewhere, which defeats the logic of the development being close to the health clinic. To my knowledge, there is not an abundance of high-risk tourist commercial C4 lots in the village. I am sure there are many more lots that are zoned residential. The village owns a number of locations that would be more suitable for the development of high-density residential with office permitted as a secondary use without amending our official community plan by law. Tomcat owns the lot beside the proposed development location, and the lot is zoned to carry on business as a service station, vehicle repair facility. The premises have been used for the repair and servicing of vehicles and will continue to be used for such services in the future. There are a number of motels within close proximity which provide accommodation for travelers. In non-COVID times, there is often cars, trucks, and buses coming and going with tourists, which is not a safe environment for children. I find it disconcerting that this is the chosen spot for such an important need. My initial reaction was that council did not put much thought into providing a more appropriate location for a much-needed development. I commend Robson Valley Community Services for reaching out and receiving the funds to develop affordable housing units for women and children. My hope is that council will provide a more suitable location for such an endeavor. Okay. So, the next one here is anonymous, no name or address submitted. In regards to the rezoning of 1451 Fifth Avenue, I have some concerns for your consideration. Our concern is the high volume of commercial properties surrounding the location. The only pub in town is in very close proximity, as well as the highway and many motels. Being in such prevalent view to surrounding and easily accessible accommodation, it would be easy for abusers to locate and stop for women and children fleeing. Although you would provide security within the building, as soon as they leave the premises, they could be targeted. If it were on a residential street, it would be less conspicuous, and someone watching the building would be sooner identified. With the highway being so close, it would be easily accessible to flee with a victim in under two minutes with numerous ways to travel. Being more residential, there would be a higher likelihood of locals seeing and recognizing or possibly calling the report whereabouts. With hotels and pubs being closed, there may be more prevalent drug and alcohol abuse. Essentially being tucked away inconspicuously residentially, it would allow for women to avoid and feel more comfortable coming and leaving the premises. In the winter, the frontage and beginning of Fifth is enveloped in snowmobilers and summer with tourists. Families may not feel comfortable being surrounded by large groups of men or people who may be intoxicated leaving the pub to enter their hotels. It can also be loud and obnoxious in the early hours of the evening celebrating with people leaving the pub. Tourism being one of our main incomes for the town, it would be a deterrent to have them bothered while walking home if complaints were made. They do not bother anyone in that premise right now as it is not residential and sticks this further back. Fifth is also the busiest road in town. Many women accessing services and others accessing the offices will have further to track as many may not own vehicles or transportation. Being more residential may allow for less traffic when packing kids and groceries, for example. Why are we rezoning and building new when there are already residential and commercial buildings that could be filled? We have empty houses and properties that could be bought with less cost to the village of BC Housing. I have also seen on Facebook, Nina Estelle states that this was not a suitable place for a daycare center. I do not understand how, if it is not good for children in the daycare, why would it be good for women with children? Thanks, Megan. Thanks, Lena. Um, okay, I think we've got about four more. Another submission that is also anonymous with no name or address. Um, read in your local paper about the rezoning. Is it really necessary to rezone the property 1451 Fifth Avenue from high-density to residential? If this parcel of land has been zoned highway tourist commercial, then it should remain the same. Obviously, there was purpose or reason for this original zoning. Would it not be beneficial to keep this property space available to the clinic if they should require additional space in the future to accommodate their current facility? I travel frequently through your community and, of course, pick up the local paper and remember reading about a highway accident and a helicopter had to land on this parcel of land. Consideration should be made to have this space available for such emergencies. This valuable space is needed especially for these types of emergencies or whatever may transpire, such as a landing, an asset for any emergency. Just think, this piece of property may save a life. Consideration should be made to leave this parcel of land, 1451 Fifth Avenue, as is. There is a saint, it isn't broken, why fix it? It is evident Fifth Avenue already has residential parcels of land. Additional residency? Sure, there is another location suitable elsewhere within the village without having to amend this proposed parcel of land. During this trying and difficult time, this project should be deferred. Leave this originally zoned parcel of land as is. This is my opinion as a frequent traveler through your community. Okay, and now this is the last letter, and then after this, I've got a couple of emails, short emails that came in. Um, this letter is from Rena, a resident of Belmont. To whom it may concern, I am writing in support of the proposed rezoning and housing development at 1451 Fifth Ave. in Belmont, B.C. As someone who feels invested in this town and residents, I find it is difficult to see a downside to this project. Development and industry are good for our town as they bring money and jobs. Moreover, this project, if successful, shows the capacity of our town to work constructively with government bodies, our willingness for progress, and our compassion for members of society that find themselves in difficult circumstances. Healthcare is expensive and a finite resource, something this pandemic has reminded us. Any facilities and support that assists people to become independent in their daily lives is not only compassionate, it is also fiscally responsible. Um, prolific measures to support health and development of children in safe and stable environments help to set children up for a happier life, better long-term health outcomes, and to become contributing, well-adjusted members of society. Need for affordable housing in this community is not something that is likely to disappear. This is an exciting opportunity for Belmont, and what I look forward to watching come to fruition. Sincerely, Rena. And then I will just read the last few. Um, so we got an email from Sharon Rose. It says, "To whom it may concern, no to the rezoning at 1451 Fifth Avenue, please and thank you." And my final one here is, um, from Cheryl Ann, a Belmont resident. "To whom it may concern, please know that I am opposed to the building of housing units and staff offices at 1451 Fifth Avenue for the RVCS." And that's all I got.
That's it?
Thank for written submissions. Um, I have a few more comments that came in, but I think we're gonna address those over YouTube. Some comments that came in, but I think they'll, we'll bring those up during the public comment section.
Very good. Uh, not during, if these are comments received for a public hearing, we will not be hearing them during public comment during the regular meeting.
Sorry, the public comment section of the public hearing.
Ah, okay, thank you very much for the clarification.
Yeah.
Uh, any questions of staff? Counsel? Yeah, counsel, okay.
I actually did. Um, it was regarding, why didn't we choose? There's been two people in this pile of submissions that had suggested the, um, another piece of property on Fifth Avenue as well. And I wondered what was, why did we choose this one? Was it because at the beginning this was going to be, um, what was it going to be, something which needed clinicians going back and forth? Which was why we wanted to be close to the clinic, right? But now that that's changed, to where it's no longer a daycare, it's no, um, no longer a daycare for children with special needs. It's affordable housing, is that correct? Affordable housing for seniors and women and children in, uh, at risk of violence or needing affordable, safe housing with Robson Valley Community Services offices on the lower floor? Is that what the project is now, as I understand it?
Sorry, the sound is not very good. Um, I wonder, are there 10 people in that room? Can I come into that room?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay.
And somebody else suggested the other piece of property that was also on Fifth Avenue. There's two other people, yeah, so I just wondered why we had rejected those considering the change in the project that has...
Hello.
Oh, hi.
Apparently, I'm just being told that folks listening in on YouTube also cannot hear what you were saying, so...
Okay.
Maybe speak a little bit louder.
Okay.
Yeah.
There were, um, two of these submissions suggested another location on Fifth Avenue that the village owns as well. And so I had wondered why we had chosen this location over that one, given that the project has changed from a project needing onsite access to clinicians going back and forth to that of affordable, safe housing for women and children and seniors and office space for Robson Valley Community Services. Would that preference for this piece of property still stand if at the beginning we had known that there was not going to be anybody needing a clinician to go back and forth between the two buildings and the close proximity?
Right, so the question was that, uh, just in case anybody couldn't hear, um, why wasn't an alternate location on Fifth Avenue chosen? Um, and because the project has had some changes occur to it over time. There were, originally, there was a daycare component and, um, there was talk of need for clinicians to go between the health center and this development. Um, and that's kind of changed over time. Now it's offices and affordable housing only. Um, first of all, I don't believe we own any other land on Fifth Avenue, not to my knowledge. Um, people have suggested other locations that are vacant, but they're privately owned. So I think sometimes there's a little bit of misunderstanding about which properties are owned by the village. Um, I still kind of think that the main reasons that I kind of listed all the way back in my presentation about accessibility as far as utilities, so water and sewer, is a big one. It really is a big one, and I know that, um, not everybody maybe understands the costs involved with servicing a new site, but, um, you know, extending a water or sewer main can cost tens of thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars, depending on the length and the location and everything. And this, this property is really well-serviced. Um, and, uh, um, so that, that's kind of to counter some of those points that we don't actually own any other property on Fifth Avenue.
So, so, thank you, that makes it a lot more clear. So the people in here that are suggesting that's privately owned by someone other than the village of Belmont.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Further questions of council? Mr. Administrator, you look like you need a, or you're just...
Yep. Might I suggest, uh, if there's more questions, I'll move the microphone so the people at home can hear.
Very good. Uh, further questions? I have one question, it's, uh, it's currently zoned C4, and I apologize, I should have asked this prior, um, perhaps in an email. Does, does this, uh, does zoning of C4 accommodate secondary suites?
So, are secondary suites permitted in the C4 zone?
Yeah.
Um, nope. So secondary suites are permitted, um, in single-family dwellings. And single-family dwellings are not permitted in a C4 zone.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff? Thank you very much. Under 4.1, we will now have a presentation by Robson Valley Community Services and McCullough Housing Society.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll share my screen.
Super.
I, to present the PowerPoint, I'll need to be able to share my screen.
Maybe I'll introduce us while we get the screen sharing set up. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Donelda Beeson, and I'm here as a representative of Robson Valley Community Services, where I work as the Anti-Violence and Early Years Intervention Manager. Um, our executive director, Lena Thompson, was unable to attend today's hearing in person for health reasons, but asked me to pass on her regrets, and she is attending virtually. Um, before I begin our presentation, I'd also like to introduce the other members of our project team who are in virtual attendance at today's hearing as well, including Julie Edney of McCullough Development Services, who will be co-presenting with me today, and Kayla Schramm, also from McCullough, as well as Sam Birkin and Sirous Sakhan from B.C. Housing. I'd also like to take a moment to acknowledge that the project we're gathered to discuss today and the land on which this meeting is convened is on the traditional territory of the Simp First Nation, whose people were forcibly removed from the area in 1916 and relocated nearly 300 kilometers from their home. Just want to make sure screen sharing is happening. We got that happening, all right? Supposed to be. All right. So it looks like we have screen sharing, so I'll continue on. So before we get into the details of the project site, I'd like to take a moment to provide some context around RVCS and the need for this project and community. RVCS has operated as a charitable, not-for-profit social service agency in the Robson Valley since 1980, and has operated the Women's Safe Home Program since 1994. In 2018, 2019, RVCS supported over 1,800 community members in the Robson Valley through a wide range of programs, serving a diverse clientele from infants to seniors. Through this work, we identified an urgent need for safe and affordable housing for self-identifying women with or without dependents who are vulnerable to violence or who have a goal of transitioning out of unhealthy living situations where access to affordable housing is a barrier. The stay could be short-term in nature using a safe home model or as long-term as needed. A woman would be considered at risk of violence if she were, for example, vulnerable to the elements, as is the case with women facing homelessness or hitchhiking. Additionally, she may be considering transitioning out of violence if a family member or a housemate is engaging in any form of coercion, control, financial manipulation, emotional, psychological, spiritual, and of course, sexualized or physical violence. As community support workers and counselors, the reality is our team is currently working with approximately 30 clients who are actively seeking or would benefit from access to safe, affordable housing. However, until recently, the options available to support women and children fleeing violence in the Robson Valley were limited to less than four confidential private homes where we operate a safe home model, and we've been down to only one for the last two years. Now with the ongoing pandemic, even that option is no longer appropriate. Locally, we have seen a consistent increase in calls over the past few years to both our safe home program as well as all our other anti-violent services. Most notably, in the last three quarters, we saw a 50% increase in calls, and then 177% increase in calls, and finally, a 300% increase in calls since January. The calls to our safe home program have also gradually grown more complex, and the ever-present issue is that the private home placement model no longer works. And even where there is a local safe home willing to take in women, it's most often not appropriate to place her there, which means we place her in a hotel outside the community or she goes back to the situation that led her to call in the first place. Well, I'm cautious not to give any specific numbers which might identify a specific demographic or client. I can say that our highest increase is specific to senior women. And sadly, I can also testify that we have had multiple families have to leave community to find safe, affordable housing. With the closest transition house located almost 300 kilometers away in Prince George and virtually no public transportation options, the result again is that these vulnerable women and children are being placed in less secure temporary accommodation or being forced to leave the valley altogether. Based on the 2016 Belmont Housing Needs and Demands Assessment, an estimated 80 to 90% of lone parent families consisted of single mothers, and 60 families were identified as potentially being in severe need of more affordable housing in that they were paying more than 50% of their income on housing. Further, close to 30%, so 20 of those 60 families are lone parents or single mothers. To that end, in 2018, based on the observed need and these assessments, we submitted an expression of interest to B.C. Housing's Women's Transition Housing Fund, and our proposed project was selected as one of 11 across the province to enhance the network of full-spectrum options of affordable accommodation for women and children fleeing violence. As community, as a community partner, uh, the Columbia Basin Trust, CBT, reached out to us to help move this project forward, and they introduced RVCS to McCullough Development Services, who is acting as development consultant on this project. So I will turn it over to Julie Edney, the project planner with McCullough Development Services, and she will take you through the project details.
Thanks, Donelda. So, um, Megan already touched on this in her presentation, but I just wanted to go over, um, a few of the details of the site. It is village-owned and was identified for RVCS's proposed use after the society approached the village for a land donation to support the construction of a mixed-use affordable housing development for women and children. When proposed, the site's features that we highlighted included the lot's close proximity to local amenities, such as the health clinic and the RCMP detachment office next door, as well as the existence of site servicing. The site is centrally located between the village highway, commercial area, and the downtown core along Fifth Avenue. Current zoning is C4 highway tourist commercial and permits a range of commercial and tourist uses intended to provide goods and services for the traveling public. Because multifamily housing and office uses are not currently permitted under this zoning, we are requesting, uh, the rezoning in order to enable the proposed development. The site is located mid-block and extends from Fifth to Sixth Avenue, which is a quiet street that fronts onto residential homes, and as is pictured on our next slide. So, the village's official community plan supports the development of affordable rental and special means housing throughout the village and supports multiple family residential uses on Fifth Avenue, as well as mixed-use developments. However, specific to this site, the OCP designates it as highway tourist commercial. As a result, an OCP amendment is also required in order to realign the zoning and OCP designations. From a land use perspective, our project team feels this site is an attractive and feasible location for affordable multifamily housing for women and children, owing to the convenient access to all emergency services, shopping, schools, parks, and highway access, as well as the two road accesses, which would enable separate entrances for residential and office uses on the site. So as previously stated, the society provided an expression of interest to the building B.C.'s Women's Transition Housing Fund, the objective of which is to fund the construction of a range of affordable housing options for women and children who are at risk or affected by violence across the province. RVCS was selected as one of 11 successful... RVCS was selected as one of 11 successful EOI respondents from across the province, based on a proposal of approximately 14 units of affordable rental housing for women and children at risk or affected by violence. We would like to reiterate that the proposed housing for this site is long-term affordable rental housing. Units would be leased under individual rental agreements at non-market rental rates. Funding was announced by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing in November of 2019. Columbia Basin Trust has also committed funds to support the initiation of this project. So to summarize, we are seeking a rezoning from "highly tourist commercial," C4, to "high-density residential," R5. This will enable the proposed use of the site for apartment housing at a maximum height of 12 meters or three stories and a maximum density of 75 dwelling units per hectare. So given the site size, this is a maximum of 14 units, which is what we have proposed. And we'd also add office as a site-specific permitted secondary use, in order to enable the use of the site for office space for RVCS programming directly to support the housing use. Amending the OCP designation from "highly tourist commercial" to "multiple-family residential" will facilitate alignment between the new zoning and the long-term planning for the site. And with that, we thank you for your attention, and our project team is happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of the proponent from members of council? Counselor Pearson?
Wait for him, sound guy. Quick question. I heard reference, and I wasn't sure if it was just in the allowed usage of a three-story building. Are we looking at a three-story building with the 14 units?
Yes, current designs include approximately 2.5 to 3 stories, but we are still in a very early schematic design stage. We're mostly focused on the number of units.
Okay. Not sure how 2.5 would work, but... Okay. Thank you.
Anything further, Counselor Pearson? Counselor McLean? Blanchett? Anybody going once? I'll ask the question while you're formulating, if you wish. So being so early in the planning stages, you're not to that architectural design stage yet?
Yes, sir.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Any further questions of the proponent? Maybe I'll ask one more. What advice can you give the public that are actually downright opposed to the location itself, in and around heavy tourism traffic, in and around drinking establishments, hotels, proximity to highway? There was concerns that victims could be whisked up and taken away. How do you alleviate those concerns?
Julie, do you want me to take that one?
I would say that any concerns with that would be addressed within the building design, which we have not gotten to at this point in the project, where, yeah, we're concerned about the use of the land being permitted for affordable housing.
Also operational, and I think if Denelda has anything to add, she can, the way that the building will be managed will also impact that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think I would just add or reiterate what I was saying earlier, in that currently there is nowhere for women and children to go, or not very many affordable spaces. So when we do need to find someone somewhere to go, it is hotels. It's in less ideal locations already, so this would be a grand improvement to that option. And we really felt like, we felt very grateful that the village was offering this space and, you know, respect the decisions of this council and Megan as a planner. So I assume if there was a better space, we would be looking at it, and I really appreciate that council's willing to work with us to work with what we have, and we have this incredible opportunity in front of us.
Thanks so much. Further questions of the proponent?
This is Sam Birkin, Development Manager at BC Housing. I would like to further comment on that. Acceptable?
Absolutely.
Is my camera on as well? Yeah, I'd like to further comment that BC Housing has a standard set of design guidelines, as well as also shelter guidelines. We work in a number of communities, hold different arrangements of sites. We'll be working closely with the architect to implement those standard guidelines, kind of to alleviate some of those previous concerns that were mentioned. Much as Saro, who works in the operational department, would like to further comment from the development side. I can kind of chime in.
Yeah, for sure, Sam. I can also further comment, if that's all right.
Please do.
Thank you. This is Saro Sekan. I work with the Women's Transition Housing and Supports Program at BC Housing. With respect to some of those concerns around safety and security for the women and children that will be residing at this site, many of these programs with respect to the Women's Transition Housing Safe Home Second Stage programs were developed back in the '70s and '80s primarily. Really, at that time, the only way we really could keep women and children safe was by keeping them hidden. And we've come a long way since that time, and we do have a number of safety and security measures that we can put into place, which includes cameras. Also, I mean, you know, with the type of technology we have even today, I mean, we can lock doors using our cellphones as well. So we have lots of different features that we would certainly look at incorporating and ensuring that are part of this building, and that everyone is safe and secure, and the operations as well would support that. Robson Valley Community Services has lots of experience supporting this population, and they would continue to implement those safety plans that they do for women and children that they're working with, as well as for the staff that are there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there further response from the proponent to that question?
Hi, can you see me okay?
Certainly can, and we can hear you even better.
Oh, water call. Thank you for letting me be virtual. I really appreciate the opportunity to be involved virtually, and to Denelda for being very brave and standing up there. I just wanted to speak quickly to a few things, although, Mayor Torkson, you had asked about schematic architectural design, and we're not at that stage, but I wanted to say, as a member of this community, something that I've been quite passionate about is making sure that the design of the building really ties in with the feel of community. The intention of what I'm trying to advocate for is that when you drive into the main street there, and I can say as a new member of the community, the first thing my husband and I did when we came to town is drove in to see what is available. Is this a progressive community? Do they have a daycare? Do they have a community service building? And I think as people who are interested in bringing more families into community for seniors staying here, I think it signals to a new family member or somebody driving into your very main street, this is a brand-new designed building, and that this town is progressive and growing. So that is something I want to say as a personal opinion, that I've been pretty strong about, and BC Housing's been wonderful in agreeing with that, is I'm hoping that you will drive in, you will see a brand-new, something that's progressive, and it fits in with the tourism feel of the community, not something that stands out and is obvious in any way. The other thing I wanted to say is, women and children are currently living in the communities that people have voiced. They currently live in your communities. They live in residential areas, and it's not enough to protect them. So that is something I want to stress very loudly. We are already putting women in hotels. That is something that we're saying is not safe to be beside a hotel, but we're telling you that's where we're currently placing them. We are placing seniors away from our communities because we don't have anywhere. And I know there might not be an ideal location ever, but it's what we have, and I just wanted to voice strongly on behalf of RVCS that we're very grateful to the village of Belmont for being progressive and for caring about this. And I just wanted to say that we didn't feel we're in a position to say no, thank you, give us something better. We were grateful for what we've been given, and I just wanted to address that to Mayor and Council.
Thanks very much. If there are no further questions to the proponent, thank you very much, Ms. Beeson. I appreciate that, and thank you to all the presenters that joined us virtually. We'll now move on to public comment. 5.1, Public Submissions and Presentations, to form part of the minutes, and comments will be submitted electronically throughout the meeting and read aloud by staff.
I have some comments to chime in that have come in over the YouTube livestream chat function throughout this meeting. So I'll start at the beginning. The first was from Bell Jam during the portion when I was reading out the written submissions, asking, "Isn't it a conflict of interest with the employees writing in favor when it is their jobs? They should be community members." The second comment is also from Bell Jam. The comments from the discussions on Facebook said it was for low-income housing. Is this not for those who are leaving a violent relationship? There's too much confusion. I don't know if there should be opportunity to address these comments between them, or if I should just go through them all.
I can.
Like, I would say maybe that's one for RVCS to respond to.
I will address the first one. Public hearings are in place, so that anyone who may feel that they are affected positively or negatively around the proposal may have a voice, whether they're a staff of the organization or not. Ms. Beeson, would you like to address the second one? If you wish.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if we were going to be able to address comments or not. So sorry, could you repeat the second part of the question, Megan? And I'm happy to.
Yeah, so the comments from the discussions on Facebook said it was for low-income housing. Is this not for those who are leaving a violent relationship? There's too much confusion.
So this housing project is permanent affordable housing for either single women or women and their dependents who are either at risk of violence, and I did give some examples. So we would deem someone at risk of violence, say, for example, if it was a senior woman facing homelessness. And yes, for sure, for women and children that are trying to transition out of unhealthy living situations, so whether that's domestic violence, or maybe an elderly woman living with a child that's unwell, maybe a living situation with roommates that's gone really bad, and there's any kind of violence or abuse happening, absolutely. But mostly, it's permanent affordable housing in community. So specific to women and children, yes, but I'm not sure if I'm clearing that up or not. Lena, or anyone else, if you want to jump in?
Yeah, sorry. I think maybe there's a small clarification around specific target tenant group and income. Those are two different pieces, and so it is targeted towards that low-income piece. And then, RVCS has added on a specific target group that has additional needs that have been identified. And those are two different things, and they actually both are the case in this.
It's Lena, may I speak?
Yes, please.
So something that I want to address, if anyone had a chance to view, Mr. Robinson, RVCS was invited to Parliament, to the Hall of Honor, and it was quite a privilege to be able to go there and represent the Robson Valley, in particular Belmont. Out of the 11, out of the 11 units or 11 communities that were announced in the province, Belmont was the only one that was identified as affordable housing for women and children. And in my opinion, and I believe anybody who reads the announcement, Belmont is leading a fast practice for the North. This is the only one provincially. We have an opportunity to meet the needs of women and children in a full continuum of care. So something that, you know, the community brought to me is saying, short-term, 10-day placements, three-month placements, six-month placement is not enough for women and children because they have nowhere to go after that. Our rental market is non-existent. You're just making the problem worse because where do they go? Well, they're going to leave our community. I brought that information back to BC Housing, and I said, is there a way to make this project cover the continuum? So we have women coming in if they need emergent aid, all the way up to people who need long-term affordable, who can raise their children, age-in-place here, that need these full-time supports. And through the Voice of Community, RVCS staff in the village, we've been able to bring this forward as one of the only, literally, ones that was announced under this project. And that is an opportunity for Belmont, as far as I'm concerned, to be able to say provincially that we have this opportunity for this new model of care. So yes, it is a continuum of care, right from short-term, if needed, all the way up to long-term affordable.
Thank you. I think that would address the question. Megan, if you want to continue?
Yeah, I'll move on to the next one. So the next comment was from Morgan Tinsley. And again, this was during the part of the meeting when I was reading the written submissions, and it says, "I believe RVCS employees are all in favor of this for sure because they get a paycheck and may have been voluntold to write a letter of support. Is there another group building a low-income place?"
As far as we know.
Yeah. And then that one was followed up with another comment from Mr. Tinsley, saying, "I emailed, and it was not read. I had already told Wayne and Mayor and staff that they may read out negative comments. I just will just state here that I'm looking at the public hearing email inbox, and there's no submission from that person, so I'm not sure which email they sent it to, but it states in the notices that all public hearing submissions must be sent to publichearing@belmont.ca." So I'm not sure what happened there. And then... So another comment from Morgan Tinsley, saying, "Take out all the employees' comments and union comments, and the MLA did not specifically say anything about the zoning change, only support for the project, so maybe another lot may be better. Thank you." And then finally, Morgan says, "What other locations have been offered?" And that's it for comments from online. I'll just briefly speak to as far as what other locations have been offered. No other locations were offered. There have been, you know, when this came up, there would have been an assessment of all of the village-owned land and what might be suitable for this use, and I spoke to those in my presentation. I'd be happy to reiterate them if necessary, otherwise, we'll leave it at that.
I think your presentation was just fine.
Okay.
Are there further public comments?
Nothing from YouTube, that's it for that.
Are there any written submissions other than the... Pardon me. Other than the reading of written submissions received prior to the public hearing?
Nope, that's all we've done.
Thank you very much. For a third and final time, are there any written submissions to form part of the minutes? Then I adjourn this public hearing at 20:32. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.